My good people, welcome to Godbe Vlog Entertainment. My name is Godbe Onoteman. Make a throw some love for you today watch me from a good morning, a good afternoon, a good evening, depending location when today watch Godbe Vlog Entertainment from. Uh, this Obogan News one carry come tell now today about the debate when happen for inside Abuja, for the president hall, what they call town hall for inside Abuja. If you see this video, you want watch, so I want show now some things when the thing carry come before I go play this video for now. When I go watch as they watch this video, make you share this video for your social media platform. Share the video, make the video get to their table about how the video be for inside the town hall, when they do the debate in Abuja. Number one person for the video, why I go talk, our journalist, what they call Abat. Abat, he not act the way journalist supposed to act for that video, where for that debate, when they do for inside Abuja. Then the another person again, when body they catch, what they call Senator DiNobiliye, he cause he add the grace himself for inside the debate hall. Because of what they in they do, you know, good when our president Peter Obi come tell and say, guy, this thing when they do, you know, good, may you stop this kind thing when he did do. Okay, my people, make you now see, make you now watch this video, I, Godbe, I the comeback. Gentlemen, we are going live on air. We will put you on on the screen if you are causing any commotion. Ruben Abati, please proceed.
Arise News presents Presidential Town Hall Series. I'm Ruben Abati. And it is my pleasure to welcome you all to this event titled Nigeria Decides: The Road to 2023, an Arise News Presidential Town Hall Series in collaboration with the Centre for Democracy and Development. It's less than 100 days to Nigeria's elections in 2023. The campaigns have started, the candidates are on the campaign trail, the stakes are high, expectations are even higher, as Nigerians look forward to an election that promises to be a defining moment for the country. Because the candidate that will be sworn in on May 29, 2023, will be taking over the leadership of a country that is pulled in different directions by multiple pressures, security, the economy, the social sector, and genuine fears about electoral violence. As the electorates draw nearer, Arise News Channel, in conjunction with the Centre for Democracy and Development, CDD, presents a series of town hall meetings to provide an opportunity for the presidential candidates to share their views, articulate their vision and agenda, and interact across all platforms with the electorate and the international community. Some of our other partners today include Premium Times, the Nigerian Guild of Editors, the Nigerian Union of Journalists, Daily Trust Newspapers, The Guardian Newspapers, Leadership Newspapers, and the Cable Newspapers. Arise News presents today the first in the town hall series focusing on security and the economy. Joining us on the program today are as follows: Doctor, Mr. Rabiu Konkoso, candidate of the All-Nigerian People's Party. Oh, candidate, candidate of the New Nigeria People's Party, I beg your pardon. New Nigeria People's Party, NNPP, my apologies. Mr. Peter Obi, presidential candidate of the Labour Party. And Mr. Kola Abiola, presidential candidate of the PRP, People's Redemption Party. Okay, also to join us on this program, uh, who is on his way from Morocco, is Wazili Atiku Abubaka, the candidate of the People's Democratic Party. But in the meantime, while we are still expecting his arrival, uh, we have his running mate, Doctor Ifanyukua, the governor of that state standing in for him. But we want to assure you that as soon as Waziri Atiku Abubaka is able to make it into this hall, then of course, he will take the seat. We have the very able panelists, uh, who are going to be part of this program. We already have in the hall, uh, Dr. Jibril Ibrahim, uh, of the Centre for Democracy and Development. And also joining us from Lagos, uh, will be Mr. Busmak Ruwani. Please note, this is a town hall meeting, not a debate. Accordingly, there shall be no rebuttal asked by the candidates. The emphasis is to give the candidates a forum to project their policy priorities, proposals, and connect with the people while promoting the objective of participatory democracy in an interactive manner. And the rules as follows: There shall be no clapping from this point onwards, no clapping, no cheers, no cheers from the hall. Participants are enjoined to appeal to their supporters attending this town hall accordingly. When a particular candidate takes the floor, there must be no interruption by any of the other candidates. There is a time keeper who will first give a warning bell sign, 30 seconds to the end of the time allotted to his speaker, and then a final call as required. Our digital partners, Premium Times, have been given the responsibility to counter any inaccurate information presented by the presidential aspirants with facts and figures. And they are well represented here, that fact check team is led by a gentleman called Taiwo Azan Adibayo, head of Investigations and Data with Premium Times. And at the end of each half of the program, he will present his findings, and the candidates will have the opportunity to respond. There shall be a group photograph of the presidential candidates and exchange of pleasantries at the end of the program. We've now come to the former beginning of this program, but first, we would like to invite the candidates to give their opening remarks, and in that regard, each candidate has just five minutes. Remember, the time keeper has been given very strict instructions to be very strict. May I now, on that note, first invite the candidate of the New Nigeria People's Party, Doctor Rabiu Musa Konkoso, to take the floor, you have five minutes, sir.
Thank you very much, Your Excellencies, distinguished ladies and gentlemen. My name is Rabiu Musa Konkoso, the presidential candidate of the NNPP. Let me take this opportunity, these five minutes to introduce myself to you. I was born in Konkoso, Modobo Local Government of Kano State. I had my primary education, or I started my education from Konkoso Primary School, finished in Wazabod Primary School, then Craft School, then Kano Technical College, Kaduna Polytechnic, where I had my OND and HND. Then in 1981, when I finished my service, I left this country for the UK, where I attended various courses in various institutions and universities. I was a Middlesex Polytechnic, I was a Lovecraft University of Science and Technology, I was in Nottingham University, where I had my masters. And after my technical education, I joined RAKA, I started in 1975. I rose from an artisan, craftsman, technical officer, then engineer, and I left service in 1991 as a principal water engineer. I then joined politics in 1992. I was member of the House, an elected deputy speaker of the House of Reps in 1992. I was an elected delegate to the Constitutional Conference in 1994-95. I was governor of Kano State, 1999-2003. I was Minister of Defence, then advisor to President on Dafu and Somalia in 2003 to 2007. 2007, I was appointed a representative of the North West geopolitical zone in the NDDC, where I left, resigned because of the negative activities in the NDDC then. And 2011, I contested election again and went back to Kano for my second term. In 2015, contested election as a senator representing Kano Central, and of course, left the senate in 2019. In between, I contested in 2015, the same position, presidential position. I lost to President Buhari, Lagos came second. 2019, I contested with other PDP candidates and lost to Atiku Abubaka. And of course, I was in, I contested election in these 30 years, 92 to date, 18 times, won 15 and lost 3, one sitting governor in 2003. And of course, won in Lagos and won in Patacote. Your Excellencies, distinguished ladies and gentlemen, I had many other opportunities of forming political parties, associations, and so on and so forth. I believe I still have one minute? One more minute? Okay, um, I think this is just for introduction, I think this is why I will stop, thank you very much and God bless you.
Thank you very much, candidate of the New Nigeria People's Party. Next, I'd like to invite the candidate, the presidential candidate of the Labour Party, Mr. Peter Obi, you have five minutes.
Your Excellencies and all distinguished people that are gathered here, following on the first step of the first speaker, my name is Mr. Peter Obi, born in Nigeria, educated in Christy King College, University of Nigeria and Soka, and subsequently have had the privilege of having very extensive trainings overseas, from London School of Economics to Harvard Graduate School, to Kellogg, to Columbia, Oxford University, Cambridge, I am there in Switzerland. I'm a businessman, I'm a trader, very successful trader, who have managed corporations locally and established a successful business in United Kingdom that is of note today. I lived there, 10 years from there, I chaired companies in Nigeria, served in about 8 quoted companies, different companies, out of which I chaired about 3 of them in Nigeria. Became a governor of my state, served for 8 years. I've had some remarkable things that happened in my transition into politics. I was the, was, when I was, I would say I was the first governor to be declared through the courts, because when I contested election, somebody else was declared and I went to court and challenged it. And for 3 years, I was declared, 6 months into being governor, I was impeached. I went to court again and challenged the rescatality, and I became the second person to come back in this country as a governor from impeachment. And 5 months after that, my tenure again was terminated by an election that was not supposed to exist. And I went back to court and established eternal of governor, which is what every governor who had structured a Nigerian election to date. Without me, the likes of Ushumole, fire me, all this would be governors. It was my challenge of that rescatality that made it possible for them to go to court afterwards. While as governor, I served as advisor to the president of Nigerian finance, President Good Lord Jonathan, was the member of his economic management team, and was the chairman of SEC thereafter. Since after that, I've been involved in 2019, I was vice presidential candidate to Alajeru, Atiku Abubaka, today I'm contesting Labour. I believe that 2023 is a critical and a crucial year for Nigeria. The government that will be coming in will be faced with undoubtful facts of bringing back Nigeria and repositioning it. Because the breadth of so many daunting situations that requires immediate attention. My commitment is to ensure that will bring a government that will redirect, empower, and govern Nigeria in the way governance is expected all over the world. And that is my commitment, so I thank you for the opportunity of this introduction.
No clapping, no cheers, please complete silence in the hall. Let me now invite Mr. Kola Abiola, presidential candidate of the People's Redemption Party, PRP.
Distinguished ladies and gentlemen, fellow candidates, presidential candidates today, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Abdalatif Kola Oley Abiola. I am a Nigerian of very humble beginnings. I have equally been humbled by events in my life to date. And I have been not just humbled by that, but I've learnt a thing or two in that process. I stand here today as a true Nigerian, one that has employed Nigerians and been part of a group that has employed Nigerians in every state of Nigeria. I also stand here as testimony to what it takes to fight and die for Nigeria. My loyalty, our loyalty to Nigeria is why we are all seated here today. Furthermore, we have a history of giving the young an opportunity to grow. Over the years, we set up establishments, we put in very young greenhorns, and guess what, today, a lot of them are here today leading a lot of, and doing a lot of good things. Our anchor person is one of them, the Duke, everybody, mostly in the journalistic, in journalism today, well, because we gave a very young bunch of people an opportunity to be themselves and grow. Furthermore, I represent the People's Redemption Party. PRP is a party, it's the oldest party in this country to date. We've had from that stable, people like my honourable excellency, Kapha Azol from Kano, is also a PDP person, sorry, XPRP, sorry. And we represent ideals. At PRP, we've lived by those ideals for the past 50 years. We believe in the power of the people, we believe the power belongs to the people, and you are elected to serve the people. We've always, we go by example from the late Amin Okano, for example. We've also been progressives all the way, we've come across, we're the first to build bridges across this country politically. We were also the first in 1979 to have a female running mate as a candidate with the late Madame Amin Okano. That was in 1979. We are progressive also in the fact that, to date, we are here to represent the future of Nigeria. We are here to be able to bridge the divide. We are here to mentor the young into governance, leadership, and politics for the future. We represent what it takes to be fresh, we represent what it takes to make sure that the ones coming behind us have an opportunity to decide their own destinies in a united Nigeria. For me, as a person, it's very personal. As a party, it's equally personal. Together with my running mate, Harunno Ziko Aziz, we intend to pledge our loyalty to country first and foremost. And everything we'll do is out of that passion to make sure this country becomes what it should be and where it should be. We are appealing, we're here to provide a fresh look at governance from people who have never been excellencies, who haven't held government only at the state levels, Kana and Kano, but at the federal level, we're going there with a clean slate. We don't carry the bagages of any administration or any party. And we want to use that to be able to turn Nigeria around and fight for its people. We are here for the people, for the people, and for the people, thank you.
No clapping, now is the turn of the vice presidential candidate of the People's Democratic Party, standing in for the candidate of the party, Atiku Abubaka, Governor Ifanyukua of Data State, vice presidential candidate, People's Democratic Party.
Thank you, good evening. My very distinguished guests, my colleagues who are here, I want to thank all of us for coming this evening. In the first instance, I stand for Atiku Abubaka, the presidential candidate of the PDP. And I'm very much aware that there was a communication to him and he's outside the country, and we duly obtained the permission of the organizers of this program for him to be represented. It's a town hall meeting, and that permission was duly given. And I think that that solves the problems of the accusation that was going on. When it's time for debates, we get into debates, but this time it's a town hall meeting, it's about informing the people. Atiku Abubaka, the presidential candidate of the PDP, was vice president 1999 to 2007. He's a successful businessman, and he is also somebody who runs a very successful academic institution, and he believes in this country. Atiku Abubaka has asked me to represent him, and we have a document, my Convenance in Nigerians, and it's a common document on behalf of himself, myself, and that of the People's Democratic Party. In the first instance, the issues that we talk about is about the issues of a nation. And I think it is serious business. Whether somebody is a president or a vice president, the ticket is won, and we must take note of that. We must also understand that in moving forward in this nation, it's about collective leadership. And I believe that in this nation, that is what we require. Even beyond the president and the vice president, people who work in government and many other persons who are stakeholders in this nation must play very key roles, particularly the private sector, if we are able to get things right. And Nigerians must begin to rethink the way we ought to, otherwise we'll continue to get it wrong. There's no doubt about that, we're in a troubled country. A lot of challenges in the insecurity, and we're talking about that today. There are challenges to the economy, we're talking about that today. But for us to be able to progress on this, we also need to talk about the unity of this country and the need to ensure that we stay as a united nation. Until we're able to truly unite ourselves and begin to think together and realize that we must work collectively together, we may not be able to get through the path that will lead us to new growth. We must take very key notes of that. We must also realize that until this nation begins to realize that it is not all about the presidency and the federal government, that until the state governments start to be very participatory and play very key roles in the governance of this nation, we share responsibilities where the federal government and the state government and the local governments are able to come together on the table to think Nigeria in ways that work for Nigeria, we may not be able to develop fast, as fast as we think we ought to be. We must realize that until we begin to develop the human capital of this nation, either in terms of education, which is very key, or you're talking about the health services sector, or job creation and improvement in skills of our people and the entrepreneurship of our young, we may not be getting things right. And we cannot truly discuss the economy full or find ways of getting a secured nation without ensuring that all these things come together and that we process it in such a manner that everything works in a united country where everybody is free to make his contribution and that we need to begin to run an economy that is more of a private sector-led economy and where government is supposed to provide the enabling environment for the economy to be revived and to thrive. This is very key, we understand that insecurity is quite a lot in this nation. In fact, a lot of people, a lot of people are not even able to move around anymore on the roads. A lot of people, a lot of people are not able to do what they are supposed to do because of the issues that we find in this country. But the truth is, the Atiku government is committed to securing this nation, we are committed to reviving the economy, we are committed to a united, inclusive country, we are committed to the devolution of powers, and we are committed to ensuring that we pay special attention to human capital development, thank you.
Well, we've all listened to the opening remarks by the candidates. Now, this program is divided into two parts, following the theme, it for the first in the series of the Presidential Town Hall Meetings. Today, we're dealing strictly with security and the economy, and this first segment is about the security. On March 28, I'm asking the first question now, we're going to the next round. There was an incident along the Abuja-Kaduna Red Line when a train was attacked, was bombed twice, and at the end of the day, 8 persons lost their lives, many were injured, and over 60 persons were abducted. Since that March 28, the abducted persons were released in batches, causing so much agony for their families. causing so much agony for their families, for their friends. There were reports, some had to pay ransom, some had to negotiate, until the first week of September, when the last batch of 23 persons were released. The excuse given by the Burari administration, please can we have quiet in the hall? Please, who are those people making noise? So if you were, the explanation given by the Burari administration was that the government needed to save lives. The government needed to prevent collateral damage. If you were the commander in chief, what would you have done? Would you have handled the situation differently? I'd like to start with a candidate of the Labour Party, Mr. Peter Obi. Each candidate has three minutes. Mr. Peter Obi, you have the floor.
Thank you. First. Please, those who are trying to, people should sit down, please.
Please, can we have some quiet in the hall? Please, this is a town hall meeting, it's not a debate. Please, can we have some quiet in the hall? Please, will you allow the candidate of the Labour Party to respond to the question that I have just asked? When Mr. Peter Obi, maybe the person who are threatening to take you away, maybe when you start speaking, they will calm down and listen to you.
I've asked the people to stop. Please, please be seated so we can start this.
Please, we had appealed to the supporters of the candidates to please allow this program to continue and for the candidates to appeal to their supporters, to be calm. This is a town hall meeting. The idea is to give the candidates an opportunity to interact across all platforms and to present their proposals and priorities.
Well, let me, let me continue.
Well, Mr. Peter Obi, please continue. I hope your supporters will learn to keep quiet once you start speaking.
It's not just my supporters, most of them are even people from several positions, people from.
Please, can we be allowed to proceed with this program by those persons who are threatening to take their candidate away?
They are not just my supporters, most of them are people from all this.
Well, Mr. Peter Obi says he doesn't know these people.
No, I didn't say I didn't know them. I didn't say I don't know them. I just said they are not only my supporters. I didn't say so, that's, that's, that's what I said.
Okay, fair enough. Please go ahead, Mr. Peter Obi.
Well, the.
Please, let's have some quiet in the hall. Please, let's respect the rules of this exercise.
Well, let me, let me continue that.
Please go ahead, sir.
First for me is that I believe that there was a failure of intelligence processing. Because before that incident happened, from informations available, there were already indications of insecurity within that rail corridor, as well as previous attempts and intelligence that were ignored. So there was a failure of processing and giving due attention to intelligence, which I would have promptly dealt with. To, when it happened, government action and communication were weak. If I was commander in chief, we would have acted swiftly and throughout that process, would have remained in communication and at least showing consistent empathy to the families of those that are involved. We would have done it differently. And I think that shows the overall need for us to improve the intelligence processing and give it to an immediate response whenever such situation arises. Thank you.
Next, let me invite the presidential candidate of the new Nigeria People's Party, Dr. Rabiu Kwankwasso.
Thank you.
You may be seated, sir.
Okay.
Okay.
Okay, um, thank you very much. Ruben, as former Minister of Defence, I can assure you that the situation wouldn't have been allowed. I am sure you remember that recently, we unveiled our blueprint. And in our blueprint, we made it very clear that the number of the military that we have today, which is about 250,000, is grossly inadequate. And therefore, we have made adequate arrangement to have about 1 million military, army, air force, and navy. And with that, we believe we are going to take over every square meter of our land in this country. Police, 230,000 at the moment. We want to also make it to about 1 million. Put together all the SSS, civil defence, and other security agencies. Within a very short period of time, we should be able to be in charge of our land. We are, we'll be very willing to sit down with anybody. Anybody with graduates in any part of the country, our government will sit down with them and dialogue. At the end of the day, anybody who decides to think otherwise, definitely the law will take its course. And that is why we have made a provision that we are going to build facilities, military depots, expand the existing ones. And of course, there's a provision in the blueprint to say that even the NYSE, which is of course one year will continue. But the provision has been done for those who are interested in joining the military and other security agencies. Therefore, we will take whatever step is necessary to avoid the position in the first place. But if it happens, of course, we have the experience. During our time, during the Chief Olisogo of Asunjo as president, we have taken necessary action to secure every square meter in this country. In fact, we didn't even stop there. At that time, we were in Liberia, we were in Sierra Leone, we were in Dafu. We have taken all adequate arrangements, not only to secure our land and our people, but certainly our neighbours and of course, in Africa in general. Thank you and God bless you.
Next, the presidential candidate of the People's Redemption Party, PRP, Mr. Kola Abiola.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Madritam. The unfortunate incident at the corridor, the train, is just one of many security problems we've had over the years. For me, it goes to show, it's just one of the problems that goes to show the larger problem we have. There's a need to go back and address our security defence architecture. Over the years, there's been a lot of talk about reviewing that, making it get better. But is that really the question? The fact of the matter is that if I'm right, since 1999, the National Security Committee Council has not sat for one day since 1999. And that is the body that governs dispassionately the security situation in Nigeria. That body has not sat since 1999. It's always been us going out of our architecture to run defence and run security. And that's why the whole thing has collapsed to date. We need to go back and address that. We keep talking about faults in the system. But the truth of the matter is that we have never actually implemented the system itself. At PRP, we intend to go back, look at that system and make it work the way it should work. That's number one. Number two, a lot of us, we tell ourselves, yes, we have a shortfall in security personnel, be it the military, be it the police. But really, if you think back and look at it and you look at all the structures outside of the police, outside of the security systems we have, by the time you pull them together, you have an immediate manpower that in the short run can solve the problem immediately. By the time you take your national defence force, your national security and events, NISDC, you take your DSS, you take all these units together with your police, you're looking at almost 800,000.
There's no waiting that they do. If they see one candidate, they come out, when mass is calling the support, those politicians will not get good pride for the country, so they face for that kind candidate. Make a first iron this part of this video when Jelo Melaien take carry microphone to ask our president from a, 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 about how he go to bring security and the other things for inside Nigeria. Maybe we'll come on. If you check all the interview where Obi, they go. Atiku, they go any interview. Maybe if they invite, I go tell these people saying, you know, get chance, we go contact top of interview for, for national TV. Even our Baba Gagaban, whether they call Tunubu, not the same thing. But this time around, Nigeria won't be like this today. So not be me and you, now be the number one citizen for inside the country. Now those people when they rule us, now they be the cuckoo for inside the Nigeria as a whole. Number one thing now, when the YouTube don't come and go tell they say, ah, this one done too much, done too much because if you did turn water for pot, if the pot, the water, pot come full for water, no space again when you go turn the water pot again. It be like this when the Pashu goat, if you pursue the goat damn war, the goat go return back to you. We can't contact the politician for this 2022 campaign election, when we the campaign they go. So say, best way we go work for, best way we go vote for as a citizen, the citizen of Nigeria. Now, as governor of Annabrasis, Baba Peter Obi, now all of us go vote our vote for. My brothers and sister, time don't come now for us to really know. Say, those politician, when they see, they they use us, they play. Because of say, in the election time, some of them, they will go their bedroom, bring money when they don't keep. Say they will take a vibe, buy a voter's card so that we go vote for them. Brother, sister, this country where all of us get, so we not get another country, pass another, another place. So for this African continent, now this in Nigeria, now be the country when God give us. And anything we go make this Nigeria better today, we the citizen, we must come together as one. Number one thing why they talk every day, eh, yes, now me, won't be gonna be so, I be from Deta State, I be Roboman. But you know me say, if I see Obama, I not go like her. You know me say, if I see Osama, I not go like her. You know me say, if I see Obama, I not go like her. Me and them would be one family as a one nation. Brothers and sister, tell your mama, tell your papa, these people when carry umbrella, so now then they cause eat, eat and go, eat and go, now be their name. Then these people when whole broom, so these people, now then they destroy the country for this level when this country does so. Then these people, when, when they stand together, when be family, so now they won't grow this country now. Leave the country to another new level for this government, whether they come out in 2023. Brothers and sister, which I want try to tell and I say, one thing be safe for inside this Nigeria now. Now our voter's card, now be our power, now be our weapon, who go they do this vote. My brothers and sisters, try and pick up your voter's card to get ready for this 2023 federal public election, whether want to. My brothers, you watch this video, not forget to like this video, not forget to share the video. I beg, I say beg you one thing, maybe you subscribe to my YouTube channel. I will come with another update for this channel. Thank you.